Well, I have six thirty, so. It's six thirty P M on March second, two thousand twenty one. I want to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Mr. Secretary, can you? Take the attendance?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Edsall?
Here. Mooted myself.
Commissioner Espinoza?
I'm here.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Here.
But and Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
And Chairman Talmage?
Here. We have a. Full board, so it's time for our pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Commissioner Edsall to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
And if you can remain seated, but put your hand over your heart and join me, and I pledge allegiance to the flag.
In. United States of America. America.
Republic.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Just for all.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting of February second. Are there any corrections to be made on the minutes? Do any commissioners have any comments on the minutes?
Make a motion that they be approved as submitted in the packet for the February second meeting.
Also.
Okay, Commissioner Edsall made the motion. Toss up. Commissioner Vandermeulen seconded. Will not have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying, do we need to do a roll call? Vote or just?
No.
All right, everyone.
Chair, we probably should, just because technically the teleconferencing rules require the do a roll call vote.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Approve.
Commissioner Murphy?
Approve.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Espinoza?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So carries unanimously to approve the minutes of the February second meeting. Now is the time, this is agenda item number five. Now is the time, and this is the place for members of the public to present a matter to the Planning Commission, but it's a something which does not appear on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to address the Pan, the Planning Commission?
Chair Talmage, it doesn't appear that we have any attendees who are raising their hands and would like to speak, so that's a no.
Okay, then I'll close the public comment period and move on to agenda item number six, General Plan Annual Report for two thousand twenty. And I'll turn this over to Director Vaca.
Thank you very much, Chairman Talmage. We will have this item presented by Paul McLaren.
Right. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Let me get this up. So this report is on the two thousand twenty General Plan Annual Progress Report. The background for this report is that each year the city of Camrio has to review its development activity during the prior year and review our programs to assist in implementing the city's general plan. As a major component of this review, the residential development activity is reviewed to determine the number and type of dwelling units that are completed during the year. And this is in order to comply with the state of California's mandates to monitor the implementation of the city's housing goals as described in the housing element. So the city of Camrio's general plan is a comprehensive, long-range guide for the development of the community. It consists of seven state-required mandatory elements and two optional elements. The first seven listed here, land use, circulation, housing, recreation, open space, conservation, safety, and noise are the mandatory required elements of the general plan, and the city of Camrio has also adopted a curb element, which is optional, and also a community design element. Government Code Section six five four zero mandates this annual progress report, and it must be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research, and is due on April first of each year, and it must be reviewed by the City Council. The purpose of the report is to report housing development activity and progress towards meeting our regional housing needs allocation arena numbers. The report progress, it reports progress in implementing the general plans programs, it reports any updates to general plan elements, and it also provides a resource to the general public, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. The focus is on activity in calendar year two thousand twenty for this report. So in two thousand twenty, there were two general plan amendments. The first was the Camino Ruiz project at Verdugo and Camino Ruiz, where fourteen point, approximately fourteen acres were changed from industrial land use to high-density residential land use. And then in the Springville specific plan, three acres of institutional semi-public, seven acres of medium-density residential, and approximately fourteen acres of low-medium red, uh, desert density residential land uses were changed to approximately twenty acres of low-medium-density residential and approximately four acres of natural open space. When the general plan, in order to maintain consistency between the general plan, the zone change, zones must also change, so these would be the corresponding zone changes than with those general plan amendments and general plan, um, land use changes.
Oh, I hate to interrupt you, but is there a way that you can share your PowerPoint slide? It doesn't appear that it's on the shared screen. So I believe the commissioners may be confused as to your presentation if we can't see that.
Oh, my. This is not good. Okay, hold on a moment, please.
So if you have it up, you can just share by using that green arrow at the bottom, share screen.
I apologize. I thought I was sharing.
There we go.
All right.
Well, I think if you don't mind, let's just start from the top, okay, Paul? That'd be better.
I apologize.
No worries. It's an honest mistake. We're not all practicing Zoom every single minute of every day, so we understand.
So again, here is the background. You know, this is, this is a mandatory report for the state. Again, here are the, the general plan elements, the seven required elements mandated by the state, and then the two optional elements that the city of Camrio has adopted. This is the Government Code Section six five four zero that mandates this report. The report again goes to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research, and is due on April first of each year. Uh, the purpose of the report is to report on housing development activity so that they, we can say how we're meeting arena goals or the regional housing needs allocation. Uh, it's also to report on implementation of the general plan programs. It's to report on any updates to the general plan elements, and it provides the commissioners as well as the City Council and the general public with a resource that they can use to look things up. The focus is on activity in the calendar year two thousand twenty. These are the general plan amendments that were done. Again, it's the Camino Ruiz project, fourteen point seven or fourteen point one seven acres, changing from industrial land use to high-density residential land use. And then in the Springville specific plan, again, three acres of institutional semi-public, seven acres of medium-density residential, fourteen point five acres of low-medium brick density residential land uses are changing to approximately twenty point three six acres of a low-medium-density residential and approximately four point one four acres of natural open space. Then again, the, to maintain consistency, the zones must change in order to maintain consistency with the general plan amendments. So these would be the associated zone changes that go with those general plan amendments. These, so this is where I believe I, Monique caught us. Um, sorry, let me back that up. So there were also some ordinance amendments that are related to land use that went through in two thousand twenty. Ordinance one one six eight prohibited industrial hemp cultivation within the city limits. Chapter nineteen point four nine was modified, and that's in regard to some density bonus and other incentives that are in the code. The code was also changed pertaining to family daycare and home regulations. Uh, this was brought about because of some state laws that went into effect this year on, in regard to how the city must approve family daycare programs or daycares, family daycares. Twenty twenty also saw another round of state mandated rules and regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, so we had to update our ordinance uh, in regard to the accessory dwelling units. And then this last amendment was really just a code cleanup. We're trying to put plan reviews as one of our entitlement processes in a separate chapter in order for us to be able to easily have the procedures for plan review in the code. So approved projects under the land use element. Uh, the residential will cover actually under the housing portion, the housing element portion, and get into some numbers there. Commercial projects that were done this year, American Tire, um, they've got their building approved and a new lot carved out in order to put the American Tire in over at the Target slash Home Depot parking or Home Depot shopping centers. The Pleasant Valley Historical Society was granted an expansion to their facilities. Outlaws Grill and Saloon converted from a restaurant to a full bar. There were also some tenant improvements, some refaces, the Las Pluses Plaza, they, they got a reface to include even the Taco Bell. There also have been, because of COVID nineteen, of course, there have been a number of emergency measures that have been implemented to help mitigate the impacts of closures on businesses. To include, the city has adopted a program where we're issuing temporary zoning clearances to allow businesses to operate outdoors in spaces around the city in a safe manner. So this is the, the Denny's parking lot, outdoor dining area. Industrial approved projects, there was a kennel over on Pleasant Valley Road, Paw Works. A new tasting room was put in for Nabore wines. The airport is getting an energy storage facility that was approved. Two additional new wineries went into some industrial areas and existing industrial buildings. Uh, there was a demo in construction of a new eighteen thousand square foot building over by the airport. A new stealth wireless communication still facility was approved, and the Amazon Last Mile Distribution Facility was approved this year, or in two thousand twenty. So there's the Amazon Last Mile Distribution Facility, and this was the eighteen thousand square foot project over by the airport Zephyr Development. The circulation element. There have been a few changes. These are just highlighting some changes to the circulation element. The city is currently operating two fixed bus route services, fixed route A and fixed route B. Um, and then they also operate a citywide origin-todestination dialerite service. Fixed Route A serves Leisure Village, Pleasant Valley Hospital, and Community Center Park with some convenience stops in between. Fixed Route B was the trolley, but is now, um, no longer, we're no longer using the trolley. There is a small, um, a van-style bus that's being used, but it still services Old Town Camrio area and provides connections to various shopping centers along the one oh one. Bikes paths and things like that are also part of the circulation element, and the Shea Homes that was approved in two thousand twenty and is under construction had a new trailhead that also, uh, which is at Upland and Somus Road, and that connects to the city's Caiegas Creek bike path. So then we get into the housing element, and these tables are kind of breaking down what is known as the fifth cycle arena numbers. The cycle goes until October fifteenth of two thousand twenty one. So this table, these are the arena numbers that, on the, on the left, the arena units that were allocated to the city of Camrio back in two thousand fourteen at the beginning of the fifth cycle. And then this was the two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen is the progress up until two thousand twenty, and then this was the progress that we made in two thousand twenty. You know, seventeen moderate units, ninety-five above moderate units, so a total of a hundred and twelve permitted units in two thousand twenty, which brings our percent arena up to a total of ninety-one percent. Uh, you can see we're doing really well in the moderate area. We're definitely meeting our goals in the moderate area, but there's still some work that could be done in the very low and low-income areas for permitting units. The next table is actually units that were built. So this is the same sort of table, and the, the left is, again, the, the units that, the allocate, that were allocated. What progress we had made up until two thousand twenty, and then we built the two low-income units in two thousand twenty, sixty-six moderate, seventy-five above moderate, it's for a total of a hundred and forty-three. Again, we have until October. Fifteenth of two thousand twenty one, where we could still actually end up adding some numbers in two thousand twenty one to these numbers that could also adjust this still before this fifth cycle is over and the sixth cycle begins. I also wanted to point out that on page six of the annual progress report, there is a note in there that the Housing Crisis Act, uh, which is known as S B three thirty, did become effective on the first of two thousand twenty, January first of two thousand twenty, and that prevents the city from enforcing its development control ordinance or the, or the allocation process for new units. This picture on the left is the two Habitat for Humanity Low-Income Units that were built over on Berry Street, and the picture on the right are the Park West Townhomes that are still under construction. They're getting certificates of occupancy's, um, a couple a week on these, um, so these will still count towards our built units. Um, this is where we're going to still get a few built units, um, in two thousand twenty one. We also have the Shea Homes, which is under construction. It's moving along quite well. Uh, last week, they actually finalized their recreation center, um, over there in Shea Homes, but there also are housing units, um, being finalized on a regular basis there as well. Excuse me. The recreational element, uh, so the city continues to evaluate all of the different residential projects for their ability to contribute to the city's recreational needs. Um, the Camino Ruiz apartment project that they did the general plan amendment on is voluntarily paying a contribution of about one point seven million dollars to Pleasant Valley Parks and Rec District, which will mitigate the impacts of the new residents on parkland in the city. And it also, and they, the, the project also includes their own private open space for residents and all the surrounding businesses as well. The Springville specific plan is going to be having the future five-acre park, but also includes point three acres of private recreational, um, space on the property plus eight point two acres of open space for walking, hiking, um, and biking, and there will be a new class one bike path that goes through that section of new development. The City Council in two thousand twenty also did approve concept plans for the expansion and renovation of Disdor Park, which will include a renovation of the playground with a ban shell, the redevelopment of the former courthouse building, um, for parking and passive park space. However, these, um, have been put on hold because of budget concerns in two thousand twenty. I'm exactly sure how everything was going to affect the city, so they were put on hold, but they were, the, the concepts were approved in two thousand twenty. So this is going back to the bike path that Shea Homes did up at, uh, Somus Road in Upland. This is the actual completed project. The connection to Caiegas Creek is back in the distance on this picture on the left, and then you can see the, the seating and the parking that's available at that trailhead. So that's a nice addition to the recreational element as well. The open space and conservation element, um, we're always, um, evaluating projects in regard to the preservation of open space, which includes agricultural waterways, natural hillsides, and also all projects undergo some sort of environmental review and analysis as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. In two thousand twenty, the the general plan amendment over in Springville is actually changing four-point, changing some of the existing or the previously existing uses to open space, so this general plan amendment will actually be gaining four acres of, of natural open space in the city. The safety element, um, all projects are reviewed to ensure that the general characteristics of the properties and the projects are analyzed in relationship to hazardous waste, fault zones, subsidence, liquefaction, and other geological features needed to be considered prior to development. Now, this is a citywide effort because we have the, the fire department involved in this and Public Works involved in this, and so everybody gets involved in making sure that, uh, we are meeting the requirements of the safety element. The noise element also continues to implement measures to avoid incompatible uses due to noise and to protect existing, existing and future noise-sensitive regions within the city. The curb element, there have been no annexations or changes to the curb in two thousand twenty. The community design element, now we continue to review every project to ensure it's compliant with the standards for new development and to include, well, and I also review any rehabilitation of older development, and we apply the general plan design element, the zoning code, the heritage zone, the old town zone, any other specific plans, and then the landscape and irrigation guidelines. This is the water drops car wash, which the building was approved in two thousand nineteen, but it was completed in July of two thousand twenty. Uh, it's in the heritage zone, so it was reviewed to make sure that, you know, it, it complied with that heritage zone, um, design guidelines. Spanish remission style building, uh, I think it turned out really nicely. It looks pretty good, in my opinion. So the staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission receive and file the two thousand twenty General Plan Annual Progress Report. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I'd like to open it up if there's, uh, if there are any comments from, uh, the public on this presentation and the report. Do we have anyone in, uh, the public that wants to comment?
Chair Talmage, we do not have any attendees with their hands raised or?
Then I open it up for the Planning Commission, if anyone has a comment or wants to say something. Commissioner Edsall?
Yeah, I had a couple items. Uh, one was a question about the Crisis Act that he, uh, that Paul cited on page six, the S B three thirty. And I just wanted clarification on what that meant. I know we have the four hundred units a year, so does that mean that, uh, unlimited amount of units can be processed, uh, through two thousand twenty five without that restriction or?
That's, that's precisely what it means. Um, because of the, um, housing shortage the governor has cited, he's not allowing any cities to maintain those restrictions, so if we end up with, uh, six hundred units in a year, then we have to take six hundred units in a year. If we end up with more, we have to take more.
But, uh, I, I wouldn't think that the city's anticipating that to be an issue in, in Camrio, are they, or? Is there, are there things on the drawing board that, that might put it above four hundred in any particular year?
No, we don't anticipate that being a problem.
Okay. Okay, then I, I had another question on, uh, page nineteen where they, they talk about the Reno, uh, requirements, and I, I thought it was interesting. It says, uh, you know, they, they have all the graphs and how we're doing, and it says, as discussed in the section above, the city is not required to produce the numbers of units, and it's used as a housing production goal, so, so my question is, uh, if, if you don't comply or reach these units, if, if it's not a requirement, that is, is there any consequences for not reaching those goals?
Not at this time, no. There has been some legislation that has been drafted, but has failed to, um, actually pass muster with the full, uh, adoption. And at this time, no, there are no penalties. It's a basically, uh, exercise where we have to demonstrate sufficient zoning capacity to accommodate the potential construction of those units through the land that's zoned for, um, accommodating that number of units. However, there is no penalty if those units are not physically constructed, and it's left to the general market trends of the construction industry to see whether or not some and or all of those units are eventually constructed during that planning period.
Well, then, you know, in the news, there was, where the, the state of California sued a couple cities, and I thought it was on the arena thing. Was that on something different?
They actually sued the cities because they did not have, um, housing elements that had been certified by H C D and were not legally adopted appropriately, and that, that means that they didn't have um, a plan in their housing element of their general plan that conformed to state law, and they weren't working towards achieving zoning to meet the capacity requirements for the arena numbers for those communities.
Okay, so, so it sounds like there is a consequence if you don't implement these, then in that respect, isn't there?
So if you don't have a certified legally adopted housing element, yes, the state could actually come in and sue the city, and there is the potential to actually freeze the city's ability to issue any building permits. Then it also, another punitive measure that has occurred in the past is the preclusion of cities to, um, obtain grants predict, particularly related to housing.
Yeah, it sounds like in Camrio, we're in really good shape and, and.
Yes, thank God our existing housing element was certified back in two thousand fourteen. And then we're currently working on the housing element update for the sixth cycle, which we need to have our updated housing element adopted and certified by the state of California Housing and Community Development Department by October of two thousand twenty one, and we're well positioned to achieve, um, meeting that deadline.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That clarifies, uh, a lot of, uh, questions I had. And then I just had one more comment, and I, I'll be done for now, but I thought it was kind of interesting on page forty-eight of the attachment one where they talk about the population, uh, since nineteen ninety-five, the population growth for Camrio, and I, I just thought it was kind of interesting that in this two thousand twenty, uh, in the history of Camrio, we have the lowest, uh, person per dwelling unit. Like the family sizes are shrinking. I just, I thought that was kind of interesting, but, uh, anyway, that's just.
Yeah, it's a sign that our community is maturing and that there's smaller families overall across the balance of Camrio and that, uh, young people have grown up and potentially moved out of their parents' home. And that, um, yeah, that the, the numbers of overall families living within one roof have shrunk. Graphic cycle.
Yeah, well, thank you. That was a very well-done report, and appreciated the presentation. Thank you.
Are there any other comments by the commission? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Chair Talmage. Um, on the, on the Rena goals, I'm wondering if the state has put any pressure on the city to, to, for the, the low, very low and extremely low goals. Have you had any feedback from the state on, on that? Do they review it and then respond, or, or how does that work?
So we do send in the annual report every year, and they review our numbers, and we have not had any questions come back from H C D. I think that compared to most communities across the state, I think we're actually doing pretty well, believe it or not, in production. So, uh, most of the jurisdictions in the state actually would, I would say, if I had to guess, I'd say the majority do get their housing elements completed on time and have them certified through the state. But I would say in terms of actually producing the units, most communities are probably coming up much shorter than we are in Camrio. So I know that it looks like we're, um, having a heavy shortfall in low and very low, which is true. However, I think the number of units we have produced this housing element cycle is quite substantive overall, and I think we've done a good job.
Yeah, I do too. I mean, and I'm glad to hear that compared to other municipalities, we're, we're doing well. Um, I, we've seen it on the commission, the creativity that staff has put into, to, um, improving the, the numbers for low, very low, and extremely low, including the Berry Street projects and the, well, the second Berry Street project, I don't think is even in those numbers yet, but, um, that will be built out fairly soon. So thank you, um, on that. So thank you on that. The other question I have has to do with the circulation element. When commission reviews projects that particularly resident have a good amount of residential density, we concern ourselves with traffic, and I know that on where where relevant, traffic studies are conducted. What I find myself wondering is on on some of these is is does the city have a master traffic plan or some sort of document where we would be able to look up level of service of, say, any major intersection in the in the city? I don't know if that's something you wouldn't add it to the to the general plan, but it might be referred to so that one in reviewing the general plan could access on that type of that type of data.
Yes, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Murphy, the the circulation element in the general plan does make reference to a what we call the Camrio. My mind's going blank. We have a traffic model and in the traffic model, it does list currently, we are we are zoned out for twenty thirty. So in that traffic model, it does list what streets are supposed to be constructed and what their level of service is supposed to be by twenty thirty. Our last update, overall update to the to the traffic model was in twenty fourteen. So we're due for an update and when we update it next, we'll push out the build out year to twenty forty.
Okay, I see that the reference to the comprehensive update is is there? Is there something that one can link to 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 review that comprehensive model? I'm not sure if there's a name for this. Getting mixed up with the nomenclature here, but just just wondering if there's something that would be called out, could be called out in the general plan that one would go, oh, okay. Then I just need to go on the city website and click on that and and be able to determine, as I said, something like level of service of major intersections and and things like that.
Okay, so our traffic model in Camrio is called the Camrio area, I'm sorry, Camrio Analysis Traffic Model. Or I'm sorry, Camrio Traffic Analysis Model or CTAM. It's a software that's rather complicated. We don't have the expertise in house to to manipulate the software, so we we rely on a consultant to do that. So if you needed information, you could request it through the Public Works Traffic Engineering Division. I don't think the information that you're requesting is available on the website.
Right, I I was shared part of that report earlier this year, and it was way over my head. But I'm wondering if there is there a map of the city with all the intersections that simply has a point in time, you know, this would be the end of twenty twenty level of service of of intersections, for instance, you know, A through F.
Yes, that the exhibit that you're referring to does exist in the CTAM report. And we can provide that to you if you if that's what you're requesting. It's not posted on the our website, but I suppose that's something that we could add to the traffic engineering website.
Sure, if that's not too much trouble, if you could share that with with commissioners.
Sure.
Let me get it. It is something that we would like to, I I think we would all like to get a better handle on as as we're reviewing projects, especially when we're looking at possible increased density within the city to to meet Rena goals and 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 meet the objectives of of new developers coming in to town. Thank you. That's that's all I had.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Vandermeulen.
I just wanted clarification when we talk about the permits that we had approved for up to the end of this year versus what was built. And when we look at all the projects that are entitled but haven't started building and some that are still pending, are any of those able to carry over into the next cycle or were they all just totally counted in this cycle? Such as the ones at Pleasant Valley Pleasant Valley Road in Lewis. That's going to have quite a large number of units in there.
Yes, if it was not included originally in the land inventory for the existing cycle, we will be putting it into the next cycle, the six, it's called the sixth cycle housing element. And we will be carrying those forward. So Camino Ruiz, for instance, that we just had the residential plan development permit approved. That's a perfect example that it's not in our current housing element land inventory, but we do anticipate it putting in our next housing element update.
But these that do say like they're already entitled, those are included in the existing.
There are. And then there's some that are not that we will be putting into the future housing element update.
Okay, so we do still have a start on the next cycle six.
Correct.
Okay, I was a little confused on that part. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, the only other thing that I had kind of a thought on as far as transportation and buses and this, this has a pick, it's not in the general plan, but a thought for maybe a future program or something by the city. Sometime have an update on where all the bus systems go, the different buses, and how much it's improved like in the last fifteen years. Where they go to and what they do. Is that anything the city would do, you know, in the coming year?
Jason, could you please respond to that question?
Yes, let me make sure I understand your question, Commissioner Beverly Vandermeulen. The you're asking if we have a a map showing our transit routes in the city and how they connect to other cities?
Kind of how they connect, when, what the routes are, where you get the information. For instance, years ago, when I was working at the county, that's so it's been over ten years, then I looked at taking the bus from Leisure Village up to the government center, county government center. I would have had to go park across the freeway with all the stops, it would take almost an hour to get to the government center. And then it would, I'd get there too early or too late. Now, I know there's been a lot of expansion since then of our different bus routes and the different bus systems that go through that get people and move people around from place to place. And I'm just wondering if the city or if that would maybe it wouldn't be a city project at some point in the future, be able to have some sort of a workshop or something to explain where we could go on the bus, how to get there, you know, what's offered, how, you know, how convenient is it to get to from A to B?
We do have pamphlets showing the two fixed routes that we operate here in Camrio.
Right.
But that's the extent of the city. City routes is just those two, and then the pamphlet further goes on to explain how to use the dial or ride system. And then it also explains connection points to the East Valley as well as to West Valley. Our CAT system will actually bring you to the city of Thousand Oaks where you can make a transition to one of the bus or transit providers in the East County, such as City of Thousand Oaks or City of Seamy Valley. And also there is connection point in in Oxnard where you can well, our buses, our CAT buses will actually take you there to Oxnard, and then from there you'd have to transition to one of the the VCTC buses.
To get a whole picture of where you could go and how that's more up to VCTC as far as where they can take you and when?
I, yes, I they have a I don't know if it's a software, but they have a a program on the website where you can actually plan out a route. Like, for instance, if you wanted to get here from Camrio to Ojai, it would tell you which buses are available for you to use.
Yeah, that's what I was going to state is that the Ventura County VCTC has what they call a daily trip planner. You can actually put in your starting point, your destination, and you can either say what time you want to leave by or what time you want to arrive at your destination by. And they will actually tell you where you would need to walk from to get to this point, and then you would then get the bus from here to there, and then that would take you to a train that could then get you from this point to this point. And it breaks down each different route you would have to take and tell you exactly how long it would take you to get there. And that's Ventura County Daily Trip Planner. And it gives you all of that information for every single trip that you want to make in the future, or you could do it right now.
Thank you, because I've had a few questions on that lately, and I just didn't know how much it advanced or, you know, where to get all the information on it. So since we did have traffic in here in one way or another, that I'd ask, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I don't have any other questions.
Vice President, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think it's similar to what Beverly first asked was the we got corrections sent to us last day or two regarding that table for the Rena allocations. And I wanted to ask about the the numbers I'm looking at in terms of what the relationship is between the the four hundred annual allocation number that was a threshold prior to the crisis act. And then looking at there were a couple of years in there were showing numbers exceeding that level, which is, I think, seventeen and eighteen. And what what it meant between the permitted and the built and the allocation, how how those relate.
So I can share with you that once a project receives entitlements, then it can actually move through the process to be considered for development allotments. And we actually do not issue more than four hundred development allotments per calendar year. And then in years following that, if the units are not constructed immediately, as long as the project is not expired and is still current and has current entitlements, those allotments run with the project. So there have been instances where several units have been constructed under one calendar year with previously allocated development allotments, and it does exceed the four hundred at a point in time. But those were never actually issued as allotments originally exceeding four hundred when they were issued in that calendar year.
Okay, so the allotment is that's sort of like the first step.
Yeah.
And they may or may not get built in any sort of timeframe, but when they all get built, if it happens to be all in one year, for example, it's going to exceed that. Yes, that we're looking at.
That's what's happened the past several years. That's what's happened, that we've definitely had more than four hundred units constructed. I would say probably the past four years, we've had that circumstance. And but in the prior years, when those allotments were issued, it did not exceed four hundred allotments during those calendar years. So the number of allotments issued is capped at four hundred, however, the actual number of building permits does not have a cap. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, right. Okay, thank you. And then I also had a question about the pie chart on page fourteen of the packet, which is showing five land use categories with residential and public and conservation, industrial and commercial. Are are those percentages, including vacant land? Is vacant land measured in terms of what? That might be.
Yes, it's my understanding that that does include vacant land within land use categories. So for example, if there's a residential lot in our general plan that's not currently developed, then that vacant lot would be included as residential within the residential portion of that.
Okay, so it's identified in that percentage for that category.
Yes.
And so it seems like we're very I wouldn't say heavy, but I mean, we have a considerable amount of residential in terms of our land use. There's no, I suppose there's no standard or prescription or recommendation, since there's probably a lot of variables that affect how communities are developed.
Yes.
But is that information tracked in any way with the state as we submit these general plans? And is it tracked statewide or nationally at all?
I don't believe so. I do think that most of the communities in Ventura County were originally anticipated to be bedroom communities. And so I would say most of the communities are probably residential rich or heavier on the residential land use component side. When you look at a different, more urban type city like Culver City, I would say that it's probably more office, retail and industrial compared to a community like Camrio. I know, for example, in Culver City, I believe about ten years ago, I had heard that they have approximately two hundred thousand people go into the city for employment during the day and then leave the city in the evening. So obviously, that's considerably different than Camrio, so there is no one size fits all. I think as these have matured in Ventura County, when they originally started as bedroom community, they've kind of grown into their own multifaceted communities and have more live work opportunities where there are people that live in the community and work in the community, as several of you know, because you've all two of you are still doing that, and a lot of you have done that in the past. So as Camrio has matured and expanded its business sectors, there has been a little bit of a growth in industrial, but there's still room to grow. There's still a considerable amount of vacant industrial land available for development, as you would recall from the general plan amendment that we demonstrated that when we were considering the Camino Ruiz project. So it's a good question. I think that's just kind of part of the nature of Camrio that it started out mostly as a bedroom community and is now starting to mature and have more retail service, jobs, office, and it's a little bit broader based multifaceted community.
All right, thanks. And then I had a question about circulation element was it's it would seem that that most of the grid within the city itself is pretty well built out and was the infrastructure has been there for quite some time. But as projects come through and people are concerned about traffic as it relates to the one on freeway, which is what most people probably experience in terms of traffic. But you're also considering pass through traffic from Thousand Oaks to Oxnard, Ventura and north and south of the county, which is all part of that impact that we all feel, but people might 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 apply that to what's going on development wise within that one community. So I just wondered how we can, how I might better address that as far as educating so that it's not an issue every time a project comes up in addressing traffic.
Okay, yes, Vice Chair Espinoza, the Ventura County Transportation Commission and the city of Camrio are both in the process of completing a project study with proposed improvements for the one on freeway. VCTC, their their study is more comprehensive and it stretches all the way north of Ventura down to Thousand Oaks. Whereas the city of Camrio just has the the freeway segment which passes through the city. Those studies are in progress. Once the reports are completed, then it's it's a matter of getting funding from the state to construct the the needed improvements. And I will say that those improvements include addition of of travel lanes on the freeway as well as improvements to the interchanges for a smoother flow of on and off traffic. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. And the last thing is I wanted to just ask if on the updating of the elements, the land use seems to be the oldest one. This probably was asked last year, but I couldn't recall the the. I couldn't recall the, the um. Answer as far as when that was, might be forthcoming, or if that's being worked on.
Yes, that's a good question. We did have it um, anticipated for budgeting last year. And as you experienced with our training budget, we had to. Make some cuts and adjustments and um, try to reduce our expenditures as much as possible because of the uncertainty associated with the pandemic that we were dealing with. And the land use element update. And we also were going to do the Oscar element updates, which is combined elements for open space, conservation and recreation. Were all taken out of the budget last year. So we're in the midst of budget preparation and we're going to try to look to see whether or not there's opportunity to. Put back in a training budget and also look to see whether or not we can also budget for the land use element update. And the Oscar element update. So we're hopeful, but we just don't have a um. Specific answer yet, and it's in our work program and we're not going to forget about it because if it doesn't get budgeted this next fiscal year. Then we're going to try again the following.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question.
I have a few comments, uh, not so much a question as comments. Uh, first off, I want to thank Mr. McLaren for his presentation and preparation of the report. So thank you very much. Very clear. And I think it was important that you stress that the focus is on housing implementation. And how housing development activity uh, and progress that we have attained through this past year. I think that's very important for us to see. And you did address um, in one small part of the paragraph, the Senate Bill three thirty regarding our. Um, well, the crisis legislation um, regarding. Potential, well, it's a growth, anti-growth control bill, really. So um. I, I think that helped in, in clarifying. I think the questions came up from the commission and I think that's been answered. So that we understand that um, the old rule of four hundred units a year. Really isn't there anymore. Uh, so we just move on as best we can and we'll see what happens. Perhaps in the interim or in twenty twenty-five. Couple of comments on the traffic model. We got, well, I think had some excellent discussion. And just an observation from my viewpoint is uh, the Camrio Traffic Analysis Model, the CTAM, as you call it. Identifies the level of service at certain intersections or certain uh, portions of roads. And um, whenever we have a large project come up, everyone asks about traffic and this and that. And it's good to have a baseline. So we understand what is the existing condition. And then what is this project do to that existing condition? And I think that's where a lot of our questions come from, and I don't know that they've always been answered completely. So I think having uh, that's sort of a comment either in a staff report. Or obviously the, the place where it starts is if there's an environmental impact report or a mitigated negative declaration. It would be in that document. But I think that would answer a lot of questions, not only from the commission, but also from the public. So that they have an understanding of what does this project really do to um, my situation of me trying to drive from here to there or whatever. So. And I also appreciated the uh, the comment uh, Mr. McLaren made about the uh. Kind of the change in, in, not change in zoning, but the exceptions in zoning that responded to the COVID uh, pandemic. I think that was a very uh, bold and noble move by the city to do that, so that we did have an opportunity for. Uh, people to enjoy uh, going and, and having dining, even though it's outside. Um, there were a lot of exceptions made of where we took over parts of parking lots or even non-street parking and things like that. And, but I don't see any words in here. I know we, you mentioned it um, in the briefing. But I don't see any words in here. Is there going to be like a paragraph added to this?
Yes, yes, we will. Those were um, good comments. That came out of some planning commission review prior to the meeting and we added in the presentation.
Yeah, I, I raised a question. Good, because I, I think it's an opportunity for us to pat ourselves on the back and say. Hey, these are some of the things we did to respond to this issue so that we can help. The citizens of Camrio and, and provide, I think, a, a very good response. And. You know, where we can look at things like that and expedite um. Either approvals or exceptions for a temporary basis or whatever. So that we can have this uh, dining uh, in this particular case. But there's some other things too. Um, you know, we have emergency sites pop up that uh, for testing or for giving inoculations. And it's not typical that those sorts of things would happen in the places where they happen, but we, we let it happen and that's good. So. I think we should toot our own horn and take credit for what we've done. So, um, good. Um, I would ask if there's any other comment by the Planning Commission. Any other questions? Okay, the action before us is to receive and file this report. I think uh, we have had a couple of comments and I just asked one or two specific questions about, is it going to be included in the report? And I understand, yes, it is. And um, and, and that's good. So are there any other comments related uh, to? Our action tonight? I see none from the Planning Commission. Um, I would, uh, would someone like to make a recommendation for us to receive and file? The twenty twenty general plan annual progress report?
Also move the receive and file report.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. Um, okay, we'll do a roll call vote to um, approve the. Uh, recommendation and um, and move on from here. See, Director or Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Approve.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Espinoza?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So we have a five oh vote to receive and file. And I guess it goes on from here to the city council. Is that correct?
Yes.
With these changes, okay, good. Is there any other action on this item? Okay, then we move on to uh, agenda item number seven, Director's Report.
Yes, thank you Chairman Talmage. So we do anticipate a meeting on March sixteenth. Uh, prior to our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, we're going to have a planning commission ordinance committee. So Monique will be sending out the information to the committee members, um, inviting you to that Zoom. Um, committee meeting. And what we will be reviewing is a proposal, um, as was authorized by the city council. To create a director level approval process. For certain conditional use permits. So we would now have a conditional use permit. Application that would go through an administrative review process that could be approved under my authority as Director of Community Development. And it um, also is in line with the comments that were just shared by Chairman Talmage, that we're trying to. Improve some of our procedures for certain permitting processes where we do not feel as though. Um, there are significant potential in compatibility issues. And that we can address that at the staff level to help streamline it for our development community. To make the process more efficient and more cost-effective and more affordable for development to try to spur economic development. This is consistent with our Economic Development Strategic Plan and some of the highlights that came out of that effort. So we're looking forward to that. Um, we're also including the potential for requiring a conditional use permit for alcohol sales in movie theaters. Um, ancillary to a snack bar and or allowing alcohol in movie theaters with full-blown restaurant service. So that's part of the um, updated models for movie theaters. We're very hopeful that after COVID nineteen pandemic is behind us and we're all vaccinated and. Meaning good health, that we'll be able to go back to the movies and watch a, a good flick and maybe have an adult beverage while we're there. So. That will be before our planning commission ordinance committee. And then we have a very straightforward zoning ordinance amendment that we will be bringing to the planning commission. And it's to add the word residential to the rural exclusive zone. And it's being proposed in an effort to um, clarify that it is a residentially zoned zoning district. So that then when the county is implementing their hemp ordinance, we can have that zoning district. Um, be provided with the buffer. That otherwise wouldn't occur under the existing title for rural exclusive because it doesn't have the word residential in it. So it's very straightforward, intended purpose is strong in trying to protect our communities. Um, residents that live within that rural exclusive zone and are adjacent to unincorporated Ventura County agricultural areas. And then with that, I also want to highlight the fact that the mark is open, fully operational. That's the commercial space under Cedar Oak. We're very excited that there's a mix of uses in there that are now operating under the conditional use permit that you approved. And just to remind you, that's Topa Topa Brewing that has a tasting room in there and serves excellent craft beer. Along with Freda's wood-fired uh, brick oven pizza. And then Rory's gourmet creamery that does really delicious ice cream that you're just gonna have to go back. Very often. So we're really happy about that. Can't go wrong with pizza and beer and ice cream for dessert. But honestly, it's turned out um, to be an excellent retail restaurant space. And we're very pleased with the outcome of that project and the developers did a good job and we had a lot of collaboration that went into it. And right now they have an exceptional outdoor dining area. Out in front of the um, whole building that takes up the parking right now in Ventura Boulevard. And um, I was out there last weekend and it was packed. So weather permitting, if you get a chance, go out there this weekend and check it out, bring your family and. I'm sure you'll be satisfied with what you, what you see and have a good time out there.
Right, right.
So with that, I would just take any questions, if any commissioners have any questions for me.
I have one question. You mentioned that uh, there will be this revised ordinance concerning uh, approvals by the director for. Uh, certain small projects. Is there a way that uh, you can have either as part of your director report or some other attachment? That comes to the Planning Commission uh, that tells what it is you did the past week or past month or something like?
Yes, you know what? We will definitely be including that in the city manager's monthly report.
Fine.
We're now emailing to the planning commissioners.
Okay, all right, great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all, thank you all very much.
Are there any comments from the commission? Okay, first one to raise his hand was Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Espinoza.
It's okay.
I just wanted to echo the, the thanks and appreciation for the, the uh. The general plan report. Mr. McLaren, you did a great job with the presentation. It's actually, it's a good read, at least for me it is. I enjoy reading it every year and it gives me an appreciation. For um, how well organized the city is and, and how fortunate we are to, to, to live here in the city of Camrio. And uh, so that, that report, I think, reflects that quite well. Um, and that's, that's, oh, and uh, yeah, hope to see everybody at the mark. I'm really glad to hear that. That all of those businesses are actually up and operational. And I'm surprised that that happened so quickly, but I'm surprised in a very good way. Thank you.
I'm an ice cream guy.
Yeah, me too.
Vice Chair Espinoza, you had a comment?
Well, I wanted to echo what Tom says and say that, you know, going through the uh, report. Uh, it's really nice to, to have it organized in the manner it is and helpful, you know, for. Our uh, own information and education and appreciate the work that goes into that. Um, and uh, also. It's nice to recap what all took place in twenty twenty because you forget uh, just how much work actually went in. For that year, given the circumstances and uh, with COVID and this pandemic. And Zoom meetings taking place, um, you wonder just how, how much that was going to impact operations in general. Uh, and I don't know whether it did at this point, whether anything didn't get done that might have got done otherwise, but. Uh, I thought uh, that it was a, 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 a great list of accomplishments for twenty twenty. And uh, I've been to the mark. I wanted to mention that. It's really a great atmosphere there. Uh, and had pizza, beer and ice cream all. That same evening. So I encourage you, it's, it's, it's really a, a great setup there.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Um, as far as the report, as usual, I enjoyed all of the information and the thoroughness of the report to put in, and it's easy to read. Lot of learning experience, but I wasn't sure what to expect tonight in the presentation. So I thoroughly enjoyed the condensed but very inclusive PowerPoint, going through all the highlights and the main topics of it. Um, and also all the questions, the rest of my. Cohorts answered, asked and got answered, which was quite a good learning experience and all. Um, and as to the mark, I figured it was open when I drove by recently and there were a lot of people out on those outdoor seating areas. So. There are a lot of people that are, are enjoying it already. I'm looking forward to beer and pizza. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments?
Just uh, thank you and good night. And I look forward to going to the, the mark as well. So we'll see you guys on the sixteenth.
Right. I don't have any further comments. Thank you all for your participation tonight. And thank you to staff. For a, an excellent report, good presentation and great discussion. And I think we have. We've issued some direction and we've made some observations. And I think things are moving along on a, on a very good track. So with that. I think I will call this meeting adjourned.